I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gettner.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
Thank you.
I believe we have one item on the agenda. I'll turn it over to Dr. Anderson to get us started.
Thank you, Board President Gettner, members of the board. Great to see everyone here this evening. Tonight, for we have prepared for the board discussion around policy AE and then the accompanying regulation AE-R. Board members, as you may recall, our district accountability committee, and I see Chris Haynes is here today as a representative from their policy subcommittee, has been really looking at this policy in depth for quite some time. They earlier this year gave us some feedback in regards to this policy, and we really wanted to bring this forward to the board in the form of a work session so we could give you the space and time to have a conversation on some of those recommendations. Staff has looked at some of those recommendations, some we agree with, some we would adjust slightly, but this is the board's policy, and so we wanted to present you the information, give you some space to have conversation, and then ultimately give us direction as we bring this policy to study in action, hopefully landing this policy before the end of this semester. And so I will turn the presentation over to Kathleen, who's prepared some slides to kind of talk a little bit about the feedback, some of the nuanced feedback that she's provided and changed in the red line version that you have, and then just open it to the board for discussion. So Kathleen?
Good evening, board members. So I provided for you at your seat a copy of the slides and a copy of the proposed red lines that were attached to the board item. The board also has a complete copy of the packet of information that DAC provided along with their proposed red lines. Board member Raj Paul will remember this well. It's actually been a couple of years since we received these recommendations from DAC. We have gone back and revisited those. Our DAC committee with Chris Haynes in the leadership did, because it's been a little while, the memos dated 2020, take the memo back to the current DAC and make sure that it was still consistent with their recommendations and let us know that it is. So that's what brings us here tonight. So by way of background, the board is aware that we have an accountability statute, and this policy really implements those provisions of Colorado state law, both for district accountability committees and school accountability committees. And there are several issues. So there are several issues which I've discussed with DAC and which fit within what I understood to be the scope of the statute and also within the recommendations that I would carry forward to the board. There are also a few places in this area where I was not entirely comfortable with DAC recommendations and proposed some alternate language. So we'll start with the points of agreement and some statutory points of clarification. So one of the issues that the statute leaves to the board and asks the board to make in terms of a decision is whether or not DAC and SAC members will be elected or appointed. That's a board decision, and you'll probably have noticed in your red line that there were two sentences that really played into this. So my recommendation is that the board make a decision, and then we craft language that fits within the board's direction. So the statute's pretty bare bones on this. It really just says the board determines election or appointment for both the DAC and SACs. If the board decides on appointment, then the appointing authority has the legal responsibility to make sure that there's diverse representation in the DAC and the SAC, consistent with the student populations. Currently, board policy has the board appointing DAC members and school principals appointing the SAC members. That's what's been in statute, in our policy, and we're continuing to recommend. So this may be a place where if we were to get to the point of competitive SAC elections, we might want to put something in policy about that. Or the board could consider language that says if there are more than one person available for SACs, then there could be an election. That's the sort of decision point that we'll want to make sure that we cover. And Board President Gettner, it's really at the board's pleasure, whether you'd like me to stop here and have some discussion about this discrete issue?
What's the desire of the board? Katie, do you have a question?
Yes, I had marked this for a question because in the second paragraph, in the second line, it says, "Create a process for the election of a DAC committee and shall determine if measures shall be appointed or elected to the SAC, and then each school principal shall appoint." It sort of seems like we need one of those lines or the other.
That is correct. I agree with you. That's exactly what I meant, where we've sort of got language, placeholder language, that doesn't clearly represent the board's decision. So this is where I would recommend that the board make a decision and then the policy language be updated.
But I still have a question on if either SACs or DACs were elected, who would be electing them? I mean, SAC, I guess it would be, what, the parents at the schools? But who would elect DAC members?
Now, this statute is conveniently pretty vague about that. They just say that the board should create that process. So if the board was interested in election process, my recommendation would be that we look for some districts that have done so. I will tell you, I don't think this has been a huge issue of controversy in our district. I could be wrong about that. I do think that the red line goes into detail about membership and really restates the statutory commitment to diverse representation.
I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gettart.
Here.
Niznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
Thank you.
I believe we have one item on the agenda. I'll turn it over to Dr. Anderson to get us started.
Thank you, Board President Gettart, members of the board. Great to see everyone here this evening. Tonight, for, we have prepared for the board discussion around policy A E and then the accompanying regulation A E dash R. Board members, as you may recall, our district accountability committee, and I see Chris Haynes is here today as a representative from their policy subcommittee, has been really looking at this policy in depth for quite some time. They earlier this year gave us some feedback in regards to this policy, and we really wanted to bring this forward to the board in the form of a work session so we could give you the space and time to have a conversation on some of those recommendations. Staff has looked at some of those recommendations, some we agree with, some we would adjust slightly, but this is the board's policy, and so we wanted to present you the information, give you some space to have conversation, and then ultimately give us direction as we bring this policy to study in action, hopefully landing this policy before the end of this semester. And so I will turn the presentation over to Kathleen, who's prepared some slides to kind of talk a little bit about the feedback, some of the nuanced feedback that she's provided and changed in the red line version that you have, and then just open it to the board for discussion. So Kathleen?
Good evening, board members. So I provided for you at your seat a copy of the slides and a copy of the proposed red lines that were attached to the board item. The board also has a complete copy of the packet of information that DAC provided along with their proposed red lines. Board member Raj Paul will remember this well. It's actually been a couple of years since we received these recommendations from DAC. We have gone back and revisited those. Our DAC committee with Chris Haynes in the leadership did, because it's been a little while, the memos dated 2020, take the memo back to the current DAC and make sure that it was still consistent with their recommendations and let us know that it is. So that's what brings us here tonight. So by way of background, the board is aware that we have an accountability statute, and this policy really implements those provisions of Colorado state law, both for district accountability committees and school accountability committees. And there are several issues. So there are several issues which I've discussed with DAC and which fit within what I understood to be the scope of the statute and also within the recommendations that I would carry forward to the board. There are also a few places in this area where I was not entirely comfortable with DAC recommendations and proposed some alternate language. So we'll start with the points of agreement and some statutory points of clarification. So one of the issues that the statute leaves to the board and asks the board to make in terms of a decision is whether or not DAC and SAC members will be elected or appointed. That's a board decision, and you'll probably have noticed in your red line that there were two sentences that really played into this. So my recommendation is that the board make a decision, and then we craft language that fits within the board's direction. So the statute's pretty bare bones on this. It really just says, "The board determines election or appointment for both the DAC and SACs." If the board decides on appointment, then the appointing authority has the legal responsibility to make sure that there's diverse representation in the DAC and the SAC, consistent with the student populations. Currently, board policy has the board appointing DAC members and school principals appointing the SAC members. That's what's been in statute, in our policy, and we're continuing to recommend. So this may be a place where if we were to get to the point of competitive SAC elections, we might want to put something in policy about that. Or the board could consider language that says, "If there are more than one person available for SACs, then there could be an election." That's the sort of decision point that we'll want to make sure that we cover. And Board President Gettart, it's really at the board's pleasure, whether you'd like me to stop here and have some discussion about this discrete issue?
What's the desire of the board? Kitty, do you have a question?
Yes, I had marked this for a question because in the second paragraph, in second line, it says, "Create a process for the election of a DAC committee and shall determine if measures shall be appointed or elected to the SAC, and then each school principal shall appoint." It sort of seems like we need one of those lines or the other.
That is correct. I agree with you. That's exactly what I meant, where we've sort of got language, placeholder language, that doesn't clearly represent the board's decision. So this is where I would recommend that the board make a decision and then the policy language be updated.
But I still have a question on if either SACs or DACs were elected, who would be electing them? I mean SAC, I guess it would be, what, the parents at the schools? But who would elect DAC members?
Now, this statute is conveniently pretty vague about that. They just say that the board should create that process. So if the board was interested in election process, my recommendation would be that we look for some districts that have done so. I will tell you, I don't think this has been a huge issue of controversy in our district. I could be wrong about that. I do think that the red line goes into detail about membership and really restates the statutory commitment to diverse representation. Those I would, I would offer are really key pieces of information that we can integrate into a new red line and leave the appointment process as it exists, with the understanding that should the board wish to create an election process, we could always come back and do that.
Stacy?
I'm not in favor of elections for these bodies. As a SAC chair for many years, it's hard enough to get people to want to come, and to add an extra layer of putting yourself out there, I think, is really problematic. And it would, I think it would be counterproductive to what we're trying to do. And I think a principal has a better idea of what the body should look like. And in my experience, a direct ask was a better way to get somebody on the committee. I would be really, that would be really problematic if we changed to elections. I am not in favor of that at all.
I agree, elections have nuance and challenges, and I wonder how we can weigh that against my time on the SAC and my time as DAC chair and kind of working through this policy. There, historically, there have been problems with some schools not allowing people to serve on SAC, some schools principals self-selecting their SACs, principals not letting certain members represent them on the DAC. That was sort of the, what was behind, if you saw in the DAC's policy red line recommendation, to remove the principal shall appoint because it was, for a while, highly problematic. We've had a lot of change in our principals. But if, in the, in our recent history, when we were not really open to data and transparency and accountability, there were some rubs, and I think that's where this is coming from, and I want to value that. Like, how can we make sure it be like us, Rob picking us to serve on the board? It's, the accountability and oversight, I think there are challenges with that when it's, it's being self-selected for some of those members. And it, that's not the case in all the schools, and it may not exist anymore, but that really was the issue at hand when this was first originally drafted. That's what we were hearing from the membership. And maybe things have changed, but I want, I hope we always draft policy with the best of times and the worst of times in mind.
I still would not support an election at all. I think what we should do perhaps is add some SAC and DAC training, SAC in particular, to the principals, so that they know what it's about, know what to do, because I've also been on a SAC with a principal who had no idea what to do, and that's problematic too. But I am not in favor of elections at all.
Sorry. Thank you, Laura. It also goes on to say that each school principal shall appoint a school accountability committee. So we're not talking about electing SACs, but more around DACs.
We are talking about that, both. That's the problem with...
That's, that's what Kitty mentioned, that it says both things. So we need to decide.
Right.
Yeah.
So, what was the process before again?
Our policy so far, our, our current policy authorizes the school principal to appoint the school accountability committees.
And then the DAC is comprised of the SACs that are, that come to DAC, right?
The DAC is appointed by the board, and it includes specific members. And as we'll look at, you're anticipating the next slide, Board Member Garcia, on membership. The policy has discussed and referenced that there would be a SAC representative from each school as part of the DAC.
That's in the regulation, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and then it talks about, on the regulation, it also talks about a certain number of members that need to be appointed by the board?
So when it comes to membership, the statute is clear that these committees are to be parent majority. So regardless of the number of members for a DAC or a SAC, we have the statutory obligation to make sure that, as you add people, that parents are still the majority of that membership.
And under statute, do we have an obligation to make sure it's diverse, or at least representative of the student population?
Yes.
The statute does specifically reference...
Thank you. And, and please, I'm asking the attorney the question, not the board members. Okay, please. Thank you.
Okay. Beth?
Okay, so I'm, I'm new to all this. I'm just trying to keep up. I appreciate Richard's questions around clarification. So can we write it so that it's kind of a, to Nicole's point, in the best of times and the worst of times? We don't have to do elections unless nobody, would there be a way to do both? Elections are not the preference, but if there's an opportunity, if we need to do elections, we can. Do you see what I'm saying?
Um, I, I like, I'm pretty confident I can write almost anything, but we'd want to stipulate what those conditions were. As I think about the DAC's feedback, I think to answer the concern that Board Member Raj Paul mentioned around what happens if you have a school leader who isn't appointing that representative SAC, that still could be a complaint through our board policies under KE, that the principal is not acting in accordance with the policy.
So if I hear you correctly, we have a safeguard to prevent that.
There is a safeguard.
Nicole, did you? And Kathleen, if I understood, you said, oh, sorry, Lisa?
Well, I was just gonna say, my understanding is what, is that staff has recommended we continue current, the current process that we're doing.
Yeah, neither, the DAC did not have a strong recommendation around appointment or election.
Okay.
I'd say in the memo, it really is about achieving the statutory language and this district's interest in having diverse representation. So appointment versus election wasn't a real hot issue, but I do think it's one that we should clarify in policy. It's not, in my opinion, helpful to have a policy that regurgitates the statute. The statute says, "The board decides elect or appoint," so the policy should say, "Elect or appoint," because that's what makes it useful for us to follow.
Lisa?
Yeah, I agree that we should stick with appointments, but I do want to underscore Stacy's point that I think we should look at a mechanism to make sure that our principals are getting well trained, not only on what SACs do, but specifically on these diversity requirements and on what appointments should look like.
I think later, isn't there something, Lisa, where, this is part of our principal evaluation as to how they're, Rob, did you want to answer that?
Just to speak to Lisa's point and to Nicole's point earlier, you know, I think over the past five years, we've made great strides in building a more trusting, transparent relationship with our district accountability committee. We've instituted multiple beginning-of-the-year trainings where we invite the principal and their, their SAC or DAC rep or SAC chair, or maybe even both, if they're different. I do think that some schools do find it a challenge to, to be able to, to get individuals to volunteer, and so we've really tried to push that as an expectation. Board members, if you'll recall, that when we rolled out our weighted differentiated funding, one of the stipulations, stipulations was involvement with the SAC, and that they had to have a SAC to be able to get the dollars, right? It was a way to, for us to really try to, to begin to engage our school accountability committees in really meaningful conversations around school improvement with principals. And, and so I would say that, that we always have room to grow. In my conversations with DAC and different DAC exec boards over, over the past five years, I think that, that there has been a concern in the past, and I haven't checked in to see if this is still a concern, where there would potentially be, if it was all appointments, that the feeling would be, was that potentially principals were just putting people on the SAC that would agree with what they said and not create the discourse that you'd want to have, which was the intent of the statute, right? The intent of the statute was, you know, parents should be involved in their kid's school, right? There should be a mechanism for them to be involved. You know, schools should be transparent on what's working and what's not working, and communities should come together to improve outcomes for kids. Like, and this is a statute that's similar to other statutes in other states that I've been, that I've had a chance to work in. So I do think things have improved. I do think that we'll always continue to need to improve, but I would say that this board's taken a lot of steps in the right direction with strategic plan metrics, with the ways that we're doing weighted differentiated funding, has really, I don't know, I, I really feel like that SACs are in a really great place to, to be able to be involved and know what's happening for folks that want to be involved. In regards to elections, I will say, my previous district, we adopted a, a system where, it was called a school governance council, and every school had an election for their school governance council. And it was, we had, we had to stand up a school governance office, managing and maintaining fair elections. If you want to go to the entire school community, is an expensive endeavor, but it can be done. I've seen it be done. And then ultimately, to the extent that that drove student achievement or, or community engagement, you know, I don't know, I think that, that, you know, in that last district I worked in, I think the, the jury was still out on that after I had left. But we had the elections, and folks were elected, but it's just, you know, if you're going to run an election, right, and it's not just who shows up for the meeting and then who wants to do it, raise your hand, and so then it's a very small, not representative population of the school. If you want all parents to engage, you have to have a system. I mean, it's, so in any event, all that to say, it can be done, but it's very cumbersome.
Richard?
Are there specific numbers in terms of how many SAC members should be in the committee?
It has to be at least seven under the statute.
And is there any specific numbers on DAC members in it?
There's not a specific total number, but there are minimum spots and minimum membership roles that need to be filled.
I am concerned a little bit about elections. Number one is how easy elections can be manipulated, especially at a school level. And I'm also concerned about appointments, too, because that can be manipulated too. So, so how do, how do we guarantee that it's fair and that efforts are made so that there is diversity representation in all of the SACs? So for example, I'm thinking about Bear Creek. I would assume that Bear Creek would probably have 95 to 100% white membership, is what I'm thinking, because of their composition of their schools, too. But then if I look at, say Crestview, okay, Crestview may have, you know, in their population, something like maybe, I don't know, maybe 15, 20% Latino enrolled at Crestview. I'm just guessing now. So how do we guarantee that you have that particular representation? And, and I agree, I think really doing some really strong work around, with the principals, so that they can understand all of the statutory requirements and all of that, so that that can happen. And then who would do that? So I, it seems to me like it, it should be a simple solution, and maybe we're just overthinking it now? At least I am, probably.
Ask it like Kathleen.
Yes. Would you like me to respond? I was taking it in. I do think that this policy goes a long way, this red line goes a long way, to making those expectations explicit. We'll notice that in our current version of the policy, there isn't the discussion of diverse representation. And although I really don't like to repeat things in multiple places, I do think that that belongs in a few places. So one, I, I think there are a couple of pieces that are in A E R right now, those top two paragraphs that are philosophical and really commit to effective accountability, and then also diverse representation. I think those two paragraphs need to be moved into the main policy. They should be in A E because they're the broad philosophical statements of the board. So it's important to have the commitment in the policy. And then in the regulation, to repeat it under both membership sections. And then I do, based on the red line that we did receive from DAC and this board's conversation, thinking about some additional language that says, "If there is a concern around the representation on a SAC, how they could go about." Potentially, there was red line language in the DAC's memo that said, "Concerns could be brought under KE," so it was an explicit cross-reference. And I, from this board's discussion, I hear that the board would be interested in seeing that kind of safeguard specifically referenced in the regulation. So that would be my thought, Board Member Garcia, in response to that concern.
Thank you, Kathleen. I think that response would satisfy me in terms of, now, the question is, do we appoint or do we elect? So, but as long as there's safeguards in there, then I think that we should go along with, with the appointment process.
Nicole?
I agree with those points, Kathleen, about moving those first two paragraphs and as well as including KE, because a lot of our community doesn't know where to look when they have issues, and so I think that direct reference can be helpful. Question I have, appointment doesn't say, statute doesn't say who shall appoint. It just says the board shall determine whether. And maybe my struggle with the appointment is holding it in one person's hand. Is there a different body at a school that could be responsible for appointment of this SAC? Or does it have to be solely within the responsibility of the school principal? I'm thinking like school, the school leadership teams or other organizations at the school. So it's not just one person making those decisions. It's shared amongst the groups across the school. So I had a question about statute and, you know, who is best suited to appoint.
You're correct. The statute does not require that, it doesn't specify who the appointing authority would be for a SAC. It uses that term, appointing authority. So I do think that that's a decision that the board could make. The board could say the principal in consultation with other district leadership to make sure that it's not a single decision, for example.
Are you making a recommendation, Nicole, for language?
I got...
Lisa? Nicole?
Yeah, I just want to point out that I think the positive thing about having our principals do it is that they have direct accountability to us in terms of following the statutory language, whereas a parent group doesn't. So it feels like, I have no problem with them consulting with folks, but certainly I think our principals owe us a duty of following our statutes in a way that our parent selection committees don't, and having them in charge of this certainly seems less serious than many of the other things with which we task them, and I'm comfortable with it continuing.
Did you have anything else, Nicole?
No, I was just asking the question.
Stacy?
I'm also comfortable with the, with the principal, or maybe their designee, maybe the AP can do it, I don't know, or they can do it in consultation. I've done a lot of work on SACs and DACs over the years, and I've said this in presentations many times. A SAC is only as strong as the principal or the assistant principal who is attending those SAC meetings allows. And I think that's what Nicole's trying to get at, but I think taking that away from the principal does not solve that problem. Our principals need to be part of that accountability process. And, and so I think, I think the appointment can stay with them. I don't have a problem with that. Maybe in consultation with, I don't know if they have a teacher leadership, whatever, at the school. I'm fine with that.
Richard?
Do we have any examples of schools that are diverse that may not be diverse in their SACs currently?
That's an excellent question that I cannot answer today. But I do hear the thought here, if a school is unable to establish a SAC that represents the diversity of its student population, there could be a safeguard there, too.
Thanks. I know, I, I believe that's in the regulation, the proposed regulation... I know, I believe that's in the regulation, the proposed regulation, right? The safeguard?
There's statutory language here, and then there's also the language that we put in red line. So the statute specifically says if it's going to be an election, then the school principal needs to recruit and solicit and identify diverse representation. And if it's an appointing authority, that they just need to consider that representation in establishing the membership. So I do think that that protection, to some degree, exists in the detail of the regulation that outlines who the members are, and then specifically references that diverse representation piece.
Stacy?
I think it's important to note that most schools really struggle with that, Richard. I mean, I was the SAC chair of Crestview for many years. We struggled with it every single year. It's hard. I just don't see how an election fixes that. I think an appointment process has a better opportunity to fix that than election does.
I agree with you 100%. Oh, sorry. I agree with you 100%. But I think the problem also is, especially when you're looking at underrepresented community members that don't, that are not in SACs or DAX, is understanding really what the work is and what the work should be and what their responsibilities are. I believe if there was a good process to inform community members about what their roles are and what they should expect and all of that, that would go a long way in terms of making sure that people at Boulder Meadows, for example, that send their kids to Crestview, would understand it, would be willing to jump into trying to do some of that work, if they really understood what that work really is.
So it's a dangerous thing when I get the statute out, but the whole idea of SAC is the collaboration with the principal, to Lisa's point. And so to try to write the principal out of the SAC doesn't work. The whole statute is framed around the principal or his designee as a member of the SAC. You're making recommendations to the principal. So if we've got a problem with the principal, that's a problem that Rob's going to have to resolve, and that I don't think we're going to be able to resolve here. But when you read the statute, it's really clear to me that the principal is key to the whole thing. So I'm comfortable with keeping it as an appointment. And, you know, we can always go back and change it. I mean, these are just our policies. So if we find out that it's not working, we can implement it in an election process.
Sure.
I agree, I, too, am comfortable keeping it as an appointment. But I liked that, I guess, I think Stacy and Lisa both underscored the idea to have additional training for our administrators, our principals, understanding the full scope and the intention of the SAC and ways that we can support them in recruiting and maintaining diverse representation from their staff. So I think that's really where some of the work is.
So I think we're in agreement right now that we'll continue with clearer language around the appointment. All right. Oops, no.
And then are we going to include language around safeguards or methods for elevating complaints if it's not going well in the policy, or are we not?
My takeaway from this conversation is to continue with an appointment process, to be specific about the principal, to make sure we've got very strong language on diverse representation, and then it's clear how an individual could take action if they felt like their SAC wasn't constituted consistent with that.
Thanks.
And I might suggest, I mean, policy KE was mentioned previously. I might suggest chain of command, in referencing board's policy around chain of command. To Kathy's point, right, if there are concerns with a principal or something the principal has done, the expectation would be that there would be a chain of command. And then if the chain of command was unresponsive, then we would turn them to policy KE. So I would suggest that if we're going to strengthen the language in the policy, that we would go that route. And I'd be happy to share with the board the training materials that we've provided, the sessions we've done with DAX and SACs, we've co-presented. I know we did that this year and in previous years. I think the pandemic was hit and miss. So you can see to the extent that we have done some things and clarified some training around that. And there are some complexities around setting up meetings where people have to volunteer their time that talk about big picture items like school improvement. It's a lot easier to get folks when you have something singularly focused like band boosters or athletic boosters. And sometimes it's really hard for folks to volunteer for things that are for the greater good that don't directly impact their individual kid. And I just think that that's a reality in a community where we have lots of really busy people and really busy kids. And so, but I'm happy to share that other information. But I'd suggest that we consider chain of command. And then as a first step, rather than driving folks to like a formal complaint process, because I think that we could get, that could become pretty cumbersome, when we would ask if a teacher or somebody has an issue at the school and the principal doesn't resolve it, they would file that chain of command, executive director, assistant superintendent of schools, deputy superintendent, superintendent of board.
Board, you okay with that? Makes sense, Rob? All right, any, Richard?
I'm okay with the chain of command. The information that you provide to SACs and DAX, that's when they're appointed already, right?
So the training, we do in August, right? So at the beginning of the year, once we have the chairs, and we train the chair and the principals at the same time. Now, we don't go back, and district doesn't provide us a training for all SAC members, and maybe that's kind of what you're thinking about. And we could definitely take a look at how we could push those types of trainings out. We could certainly do a virtual training to share what their roles are, what that would do. But we don't train the public, per se, on what SACs and DAX do, and maybe that's the point.
That's what I was getting to, because I know that in the work that I've done in a bunch of school districts, including this one here, as it relates to underrepresented communities, they know that there's PTAs, they know that there's PTOs, et cetera, but very few know what a SAC is or what, you know, what the responsibility of SAC is. They hardly ever hear about SACs. They hear about PTOs, they hear about PTAs, and other committees that may be formed in those particular schools. And I'm just curious to find out if, in fact, we could do something where the school community, I'm not saying go out to the, well, at-large community, but the school community at least, where they could have some presentations from someone about the important role of a SAC that does not equal to a PTA or a PTO, but the important role of a SAC. And I'm seeing here some of the responsibilities of the SAC on the regulations, which I think if people understood that, boy, they would be wanting to get involved, I think, at least in the Latino community. If they knew that information, they would want to get involved. And if, in fact, there is also accommodations that are being made for people that may not speak English, because I think that's another obstacle for people to get involved in these particular committees.
So can I make a suggestion, Richard? What if we had a link on the website that had a webinar? Because we can't do 58 presentations every year. It would just kill staff, I think. But if we had something that was, that addressed those questions, that had a common set of questions? Stacy?
I don't want to take up any more time. However, SACPI's, SAC, yes, State Advisory Council for Parent Involvement in Education, part of their charge is SACs and DAX. It's written into the statute for SACPI. And they used to do SAC and DAC trainings. And my understanding is they're going to get back to that and to also their, the statute that created SACPI sunsets, and so it needs to be reauthorized. And so we just went through a conversation about what does that look like? And we made a pretty consensus that we need to focus on SACs and DAX. SAC, SACPI membership by parents has to be a certain number of the parent representatives have to be on a SAC and DAC. And so there's a mechanism at the state level to help with some of this, and hopefully that will be coming in the not-too-distant future.
All right, anything else on this issue? Okay. Kathleen, next?
Okay, so the next issue, which we've already really touched on in several different ways, is on membership. The recommendations of the DAC committee, so that gets complicated, but back to the memo with the recommendations for revisions, they had a couple of specific comments. One was to make sure that they expand, we expand and clarify the definition of the representative who's from the business community, just make sure it includes for-profit, nonprofit, special or service organizations. We also, the recommendation is to put into policy the requirement that our DAC include the representative from each SAC. So that's new red line language in the policy regulation, page two. And then the third piece that is represented in the red lines that comes from the DAC recommendation is the ability of the DAC itself to nominate at-large members who would be able to continue their work on the DAC. This has come up in our recent history, where, for example, if the term for a DAC member is proposed to be two years, also something that the board sets, it's not established by policy. It's possible that you could have a great SAC representative whose child would then move on to another school. And if they're not on the SAC at their child's new school, the DAC might lose the institutional knowledge that that individual has. So it was the recommendation of our DAC policy subcommittee that that additional group of members be placed into policy. So you will see this in the DAC membership red line on page two in AE-R.
Stacy, then Lisa?
Would the at-large DAC members only be appointed in that circumstance? Or can they just have someone that they just want to have join as an at-large member?
So the way it's written, DAC would be able to nominate, but it is still to the board to appoint. So this would come forward as a slate, potentially, of proposed members to DAC, and then it would be up to the board to appoint.
So it's not just that circumstance that someone isn't necessarily going to be on the next SAC? It could be any reason.
That's correct.
But that's one reason.
That's correct. And to be candid, as I reviewed and got prepared for today, after already giving you the policy red lines, there are additional changes I'd like to make, right? Like I just mentioned, the purpose paragraphs, moving over to policy. And in this area, when you look at the proposed red line, it currently reads additionally, the DAC may nominate at-large members and ask the board to expand the DAC's membership, period. But if the board was interested in allowing DAC to nominate at-large members, but wanted to create more specific conditions, such as to promote the board priority of diverse representation, or to carry forward institutional knowledge, the board can put language there.
I like those two clarifications. I'm not clear about why you would need more at-large members if not for those reasons, so I would be in favor of that. I'm also really in favor of this addition to the community member to include nonprofit, blah, 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 blah. Business seems too narrow. Having a community member with any kind of background seems adequate to me. So I like that. Thank you.
I think Stacy and I seem to be on the same page tonight. Certainly, that change for additional language is good, but I'm not a fan of this at-large membership, I think for several reasons. We've got a lot of fantastic folks in the DAC, and every time we lose one, that's a shame. But we also have a lot of parents in this community who I think we want to see get more involved, and we'd love to see our really excellent DAC members consider service in other ways to our district. I spend a lot of time working with nonprofit boards and city councils, in addition, obviously being a member of this board. And I think when we don't have efficient and effective turnover, boards tend to stagnate. So I'm not particularly a fan of finding additional ways to keep members there when their term has expired. I'd rather see them run for this board or to become a member of another committee that we have in our district.
Thank you. I agree, I like the expanded definition, the inclusion in policy that we have one representative from each SAC. With the at-large members, I think there is benefit to expanding for diversity and for community members. Maybe there's community members that are not on their SACs or have been want to participate. And I think it could be helpful with our Grab Plus initiatives to have a slightly more diversity of representation on the DAC. I would like to see some safeguards around the at-large membership. I know DAC changed its bylaws to cap it at no more than 15% or to not ensure that there's not more than two representatives from each school, because it can become problematic if you have people wanting to flood the DAC, if they know something is, an area of, a topic of interest is up, whether it's a charter school renewal or, I don't know what, funding the band, what have you. So I think having some safeguards around numbers might be helpful, so you're not tipping the scale if we choose to go that route.
Yeah, one thing that confused me a little bit about the terms is DAC being two-year term and SAC being a one-year term. And for somebody who's on their SAC, their child is staying in that same school and for whatever reason, they're not appointed next year to the SAC, then do they also have to quit the DAC?
Thank you for that clarification. I think we need that clarification in the regulation, and I don't think it's there adequately yet, that if your child is no longer attending, right, then you are no longer the SAC representative to the DAC. So I do, I agree with you, Board Member Sergeant, that that needs to be clarified in the regulation as it's written. The recommendations around one-year and two-year did come from the DAC policy subcommittee. So I don't have significant feedback about why one-year and why a two-year term. I do think the board knows and understands that you develop a lot of knowledge as you serve. So maybe it does, especially with DAC's input into the budget and to some of our other really very significant work at the board, that it may be helpful to have them serve more than just a single year. But again, this is not something that's established by statute. This is a board decision.
And I don't have a problem with somebody staying on DAC for the maximum, because there are term limits. And so, you know, somebody who is on for the full six years, I don't have a problem with it. Can I say it again another way? No?
I agree with the extending that one-year term for SACs to two years. I don't know if anybody made that recommendation or not, but anyway, I'd like to make it because it takes, I mean, it takes longer than one year to really get into it, you know, even sitting on a board here. You know, it takes at least a couple of years before you really get into it and understand what you're doing. So I really think that a one-year term for SACs is not enough for them to be making any kind of difference as it relates to their own school and as it relates to the work that they're going to be doing at DAC. So I'd like to see that extended to two years.
So I think it was the DAC recommendation that the SAC only have a one-year term, so you want to change that? Nicole, and then Stacy?
I was going to say that the reason that decision was made was because two years felt like a burden to a lot of people to join the SAC, and that's why the recommendation was put forth by the DAC to have that be a one-year term. And I don't think their term limits aren't, I don't think they have limits, or if they do, it's more than like the three that the DAC has, because they didn't want it to be a barrier to entry, that I don't know if I can commit to two years if I don't, if I'm, you know, if I might be moving to a different school or aging out, or this might just not be for me. So I think that was, that was how I recall the intent of the one-year for the SAC members and the two-year for the DAC because of the institutional knowledge.
Stacy?
I think we all should understand that getting SAC members is not easy. So any barrier that we put to getting those members, I think, is a real problem. So any barrier that we put to getting those members, I think, is a real problem. I would be okay with the one-year if there is language that says to be renewed as many times as they want, or something like that. That would, I'd be okay with that, because I understand the two-year at the, you know, you're appointed to this for two years, you're tied in, you don't want to do that. I understand what Nicole's saying, I also understand what Richard's saying, and we don't want any barriers to these people being involved. This is not an easy committee to get people on, it just isn't. And so anyone who wants to do it should be able to do it for as long as they want to do it, in my opinion.
I agree 100% with you, but I also think that people ought to be involved in committees because they want to do something. It's not about getting numbers, it's not about making sure that, I get my seven numbers there, so we're done. It's about what are you going to do when you get into the SACs based on the regulation, based on the statute? That's important. And that's why I'm saying that I think that maybe one-year is not enough, two years is probably better, but I'm comfortable with one-year, but if you want to serve another year, fine, yeah.
So we have consensus on that? Okay. Anything else on the membership? Okay. Do you have clarity, Kathleen?
Yeah, so we had three points that we were discussing, and I feel like we might have gotten there on two of them, length of terms and the appointment versus election. If I can go back to membership, I think I could use, it seems that there is consensus from the board that it's helpful to have the DAC include the SAC representatives from each school. So then the only remaining question would be at-large membership.
And what I heard was guardrails around it, but I don't think we came to conclusion, to your point, on exactly what the guardrails are. Is it percentages? Is it as Stacy recommended? Is it, I mean, I think we, I think we could leave it up to you, Kathleen, to come up with guardrails. Lisa?
I just want to be clear that I'm not in favor of it with guardrails. I just think there's been a lot of conversation, so I understand I may be in the minority, but I just want to clarify, that's not what I'm saying.
No, I understood that.
And I'm not totally on that either. I mean, if we're going to have at-large members, I want that in there, but I don't understand why at-large members are actually needed.
I have to say, that raised a red flag to me, because it's like, why would you need at-large members? So is there a strong feeling that we need at-large members? Correct me if I'm wrong, you can still attend, even if you're not a member.
Yes, the board policy requires that the DAC meetings be open, and I think statute does also.
Stacy?
I have a quick clarification about the SAC membership being a DAC member. So the way it used to work is that someone, a school would say, we need a DAC representative, and then by default, the DAC representative became a member of SAC. This sounds like it's the other way around, that, it's a very subtle difference, but I think it might be worth discussing that a little bit more. It seemed to me, in my experience, that people were more apt to say, oh, I want to be that DAC rep, and then we were like, woo-hoo, we got another SAC member. The other, the way, the other way around wouldn't have worked as well, in my experience. So that just might need a little more discussion, I don't know. It's a very subtle difference.
So, question. Should it be the way you, is your, you want the policy to suggest that it works from the bottom up instead of the top down?
I would like to, I would like to see that it says something that a school's DAC representative is also a member of that school SAC, instead of the other way around. That would mean that the SAC would have to get together and decide who their DAC member is, which in theory sounds really good. I just, I'm just so worried about this. Like SACs are not as strong as you really want them to be, and I worry that if you make all of these extra things that SACs have to do, it's going to be counterproductive. So I don't know.
Nicole?
I would argue that for our DAC to be highly effective and provide recommendations to the board, we would want folks that are joining the DAC to have some understanding of what their SAC and their school accountability does, because it really is similar to what the DAC does. And to have it, if the DAC relies on their SACs for the budget information and relies on that sort of conduit, it is helpful for the DAC to be effective. And that's, I think, when, as, that, there's somewhere along the line that transition happened, because as long as I was a DAC member, that was SAC fed the DAC, not DAC fed the SAC for that purpose. And I also feel awkward, I'm wearing two hats here, and I wonder if there's opportunity for our DAC representative in the room to answer some of these questions on the, how the current DAC feels for some of these, if we have questions about the DAC's will and desire. But, so that, I think feeding, from the SAC to feed the DAC, and it'd be interesting to see if we have any information on if that's been excessively or provided an undue burden, but it does generate, it makes the work of the DAC a little bit easier when people come in with some basic understanding.
And most of the time, I think that's probably what happens, just don't think that happens all of the time. And, and for someone to say, I want to be a DAC member, I think they usually have been to SAC meetings or have some kind of understanding. No one I know just jumps into being DAC, a DAC representative. I was asked 100 times, and I said, no, because I knew how much work it was, like I wasn't prepared to do that. So I just, I just worry that if you have an, not a well-attended SAC of three members, that one of them has to be a DAC member. They may not want to do that. There may be somebody else. And I just, I worry if you have to use your, you sit at your first SAC meeting and you look around, and one of them has to be the DAC member, I don't know. I just, I feel like that's another barrier to getting what we really want to happen, happen.
Can I ask a question? Are there at-large members?
Right now? Is that what you're asking? I think so.
So is there a strong consensus? Let's just focus on at-large, and then we can talk about composition. Do we want to have at-large, or do we not want to have at-large? I see...
I'm okay with at-large. I mean, if DAC is recommending that they want at-large, I think we need to follow a recommendation.
So how about this? How about if, Kathleen, you put some language together with guardrails, and we'll consider it when we bring this back? We'll see how we feel with the guardrails. See if that answers some questions. It may not answer all questions, but it may answer some. And we can get some response from the DAC about how many at-large members they actually have and how valuable it is, because I think having some on-the-ground perspective on this would be helpful, at least for me. Rob, and then...
And I will remind the board, this was going to come to you two more times, right? So feedback, then you'll, it'll be on study, right? Then it would come, maybe study again, depending upon, you know, how close we get, and then action. So we'll, we'll make sure that we'll continue to bring this forward, so, and just in the name of moving the conversation along, I think Kathleen's got the right direction that she needs, with the understanding that there isn't total consensus on the board whether you should have at-large membership or not. So she'll, Kathleen and our team will put together, these would be the proposed guardrails around at-large members, to see if we can get to, get to something that the majority of board can support.
Kitty?
So a couple of things. Is it possible, when defining membership, to have "shall" for some of them, like a representative from each SAC, and "may" for, say, an at-large member? So that it's not required, but it's permitted? And then the other question I have is, I just don't understand a phrase, it's on page three of the regulation, first paragraph, second to last line, it says, talking about topics of student relevant to the work of the SAC. And I don't know what that means.
You said you're looking at page three of the regulation?
Yes. The, the first paragraph that's red line, it just talks about the purpose of SACs, and it says that SAC advises school principals, school community on budgetary priorities, student growth and achievement, student improvement plans, family memberships, and topics of student relevant to the work of the SAC. And I don't understand that.
Oh.
Yes, that is clearly an error.
Okay.
So let me just consult. Topics of study relevant, not student, yep.
All right, anything else on membership? Richard?
Kathleen, just, just so that I can understand the regulation a little bit better. The current regulation, if you're looking at the DAC, shall consist of at least, which is on page two of the regulation. And it's got the first two bullets, three bullets, or four bullets, I guess, was the old regulation where it had three parents of students enrolled in district schools, one teacher employed by the district, one school administrator employed by the district, one person who is involved in business in the community within the district boundaries? That's the old regulation?
That's correct.
And then the new regulation is all these other red things that we have in there now?
Right.
So let me ask a question, because I've been on the board for eight years, and it seems to me like the DAC membership, because I was the liaison for a while, include all the SACs at that time. Or at least all the SACs were there at the, at the DAC meetings. Now, were they voting members, or, I mean, what, I guess I'm confused in terms of all of that.
Yeah, and I think that's a good practical question, so our practice may have evolved past our policy in this area, but I don't believe that the language about a rep from each SAC is in the current policy.
Well, this regulation is actually catching up to past practices, I guess, in other words.
It kind of goes to what I was talking about. I mean, each school has a DAC representative, right? And then they attend the SACs. What this, what the proposal is, is that the SAC is established, and they decide who the DAC representative is that they send from their SAC. There's always been, there should be a DAC representative from every school.
No, I hear you, but when you're talking, when you're thinking about institutional knowledge, I can recall, and I'm going back 20 years, that you had SAC representatives on DAC.
It just may not have been required, Richard, but yes, that's true.
So I guess what I'm saying is, we're catching up on the, on the current practice with this change in policy.
Okay, I actually have the regulation in front of me, and we're changing the language. So it currently says, "The board shall appoint persons to the DAC," and then it lists them, parents, charter representation, at least one of the persons has knowledge of charter schools, and each district school is represented on the DAC. It doesn't say that they are representatives of each school's SAC.
I believe today, you have DAC representatives from schools that don't have functioning SACs. Is that an accurate statement? So, so to the point of, you know, that Stacy's been discussing, right, you know, we've made them have DAC representatives, right, to the extent that they have functioning SACs, right, that meet all the criteria?
Okay. Anything else on this point? No. Okay. Do you have enough, Kathleen?
I have enough.
Yes, thank you. That conversation was, the discussion was very helpful. Those were the easy parts of this, so now we'll go to the hard part. No, I'm being a little bit silly, but no. There were some recommendations that came from our DAC group that are in the memo that was prepared for the board, that I did not move into the policy red line. So I believe I've captured them on this slide. They do apply to both DAC and SAC. So the DAC recommended that the board policy also include the language that's in quotes, that the DAC is entitled to access information, request additional school and/or district information, and present to the Board of Education pursuant to these duties as needed. It goes on to say, "The district or board shall respond to all information requests within a reasonable timeframe." And then in another section of the DAC's proposed red line, it says, "When DAC submits recommendations, the district and/or board shall provide written feedback and justification for decisions and actions pursuant to the DAC's recommendations." So, to the point I believe that a board member already made tonight, when I look at that very, very strong language, and I look at the way things are working now, I do think we have an extremely positive relationship. This district has a commitment to transparency and sharing of data that is unlike any other district that I've had the privilege to work with in 28 years. But I had significant pause and concern with the strength and the wording of these recommendations. And I did share my thoughts on this with Chris Haynes, because he's an amazing partner. So we did have a conversation last week about where I did not feel comfortable, as the attorney working with the board, moving those recommendations into policy as written. So you will see that in the current red line, there is a commitment to providing information on the laws, the rules, the policy that sets forth the duties, really making sure, I think, to Board Member Garcia's point, that we are educating our population in our DACs and SACs, and really equipping them with the tools and the information they need to make a meaningful contribution. I, just fundamentally, I think any individual in our district has the ability to use the Open Records Request Act, which people do. And I didn't carry forward then this very strong language recommendation, because of concerns that it could consume us entirely, potentially, depending on how things are working. I also limited the language around presenting to the board at any time or to the extent needed. This is a board advisory committee. The point is to provide that advice and information and input to the board. So I softened that language to say, may make recommendations in writing, I apologize for the typo, Board Member Sergeant, it should say "and," through an annual presentation, or more frequently as requested by the board, because the board certainly could identify additional times during the year or issues that they may want to hear from the DAC. And then I guess if I can just make the last point on the written feedback and justification, also just uncomfortable with the strength of the wording, and softened it to say that the board for the DAC, or the principal, when we're talking about the SAC, shall strive to provide feedback, including when possible, in writing. So those are those three points.
Kitty, then Nicole, then Lisa?
Yeah, so I have a few questions about this. So what information is, is DAC referring to in this? And what information do they just get? And I'm not sure what they're asking for, I guess.
I think that's a fair question. So obviously, when it comes under the powers and duties of this DAC or this SAC, I think the fact that we, we need input requires that we share information in order to solicit input, for example, around... So obviously, when it comes under the powers and duties of this DAC or this SAC, I think the fact that we need input requires that we share information in order to solicit input, for example, around spending decisions or budget. There was not more specific language in that DAC recommendation. It was really written with the broad language, so I don't have a specific example, Board Member Sergeant.
To me, this seems pretty wide open and that it could conceivably put a fair amount of extra work on the board or the board president to respond to all of these things. And it feels a little bit like the tail wagging the dog there. Yeah, that...
So just to clarify for the board, so you can understand how it works today in regards to gathering information. So I meet with DAC exec once a month, and we talk about the information that DAC feels like would be helpful to know and understand. If there's information that they're looking for, we talk about, you know, how that can work, what we can present, what we have available, what would take time to create. And again, you know, very collaborative relationships. If there's information that DAC really wants to look at as they're making budget recommendations or if they're thinking about, you know, the improvement plan of the district and managing and maintaining that, if I don't have it readily available, I try to articulate when we can make that available. And so, but most of the information that they need has to align with budget recommendations that they would need to make and just the monitoring of the district unified improvement plan. And whether that's discipline data, we've been digging in a lot about, you know, disproportionate discipline, or, you know, some budget information. That's, those are the main areas where they'd want information. And I think that it's important, you know, as we're drafting policy to, you know, information requests that allows them to function, right? In their statutory role is important. If it's broad, wide open, you know, another superintendent, another board, another DAC exec, you know, it could become, you know, potentially problematic.
I like the recommended language change that you made, Kathleen. I think it allows DAC to have some of the feedback loop that they're looking for, allows them access to the information that they're looking for, and doesn't put undue burden on the board or the district staff. And I, you know, somebody that first joined the DAC and they had to cora information to provide feedback on the UIP, we have come a long way in our sharing of information. I think that, and that's, that was a reality for a while, which is where that came from. And to Dr. Anderson's point, we, that's not how the DAC operates right now. And our district is incredibly transparent with a lot of that information that is relevant to the work of the strategic plan and the unified improvement plan. So I am okay with the proposed changes that you have made.
Lisa?
Kathleen, I really appreciate your recommendations. I think you've done a great job here of putting together a document that really reflects partnership we have with DAC. The one concern I do have is this including when possible in writing clause. I think we all know the different ways that communication is possible. A written document from the board requires such a high level of scrutiny and so much collaboration. I'm not sure that listing it as sort of the ideal form of communication is the best way to go. I think if there's a reason that DAC needs written communication, that could always be addressed, and I'm sure that we would respond if and when it was possible. But I don't know that we want to highlight it there as the best idea.
And if I could jump in, President's privilege, I totally agree with Lisa. We act as a board. The DAC presents to us, we have conversation. I think it's a, I'm sure it would fall on the President's shoulders, but I think the minutes are the better written reflection of what happened at the board meeting as opposed to trying to summarize something and then leaving something out. So we do have it in writing in the minutes, but I would take that out because I just think it's not necessary and actually very problematic potentially. Will you agree on that? Okay. All right, anything else on this? I have a general question, Kathleen. So I have what was in board docs. I have what you gave today, and I have the, can I ignore what was in board docs? Because you're making recommendations, because I had a lot of questions and comments about their powers and duties, which you have changed and put in here. So this is what I should be reading. It makes it a lot simpler, I just wanted to make sure I'm following.
Yes, thank you for that question. So I did work carefully through, just our normal process before I come to the board with any policy recommendation, is to look at our policy, revisit state law, look at the CASB sample, because they provide good samples. That's something that I would always do before coming to this board with a red line. In this case, I've also had DAC's excellent memo and their detail for some time. So the red line that was attached to the board docs agenda item and that I provided an extra copy of tonight are my recommendations based on all of DAC's feedback. So it incorporates the content from the memo with the few exceptions that I noted. And I would respectfully also, when the board does come to talk about this, I think it's been typical that the DAC members who've made recommendations around policy language will give the board additional direct input, including, this red line doesn't include something that we thought was very important, that we get access to all information. So I think there's still an opportunity for DAC to advocate to the board for something different than what I've moved forward to the board, but that red line does take into account the DAC memo and feedback.
If we're done with that, can we move to another topic? Not, as it relates to DAC?
So let's follow through, Richard, with what Kathleen's next thing is, and then we can go clean up. So Kathleen, I think we're ready to move on to your next. Oh, sorry, not yet. Kitty?
And I had emailed Rob this, so if you responded, I didn't get a chance to see it. But it's in the paragraph that defines who you're related to. And just wondering if step relationships would also fall under that?
Could you repeat your question, Board Member Sergeant? I see the language is on page two.
Right, in the middle of the page, it's in black, so it's already in there. And it says, "A person may not serve in more than one of the required membership roles on DAC. A person who's employed by the district or related to a district employee shall not be eligible." And then it goes on, "Related means person, spouse, son, daughter, sister, mother, or father." And so my question is, step relationships?
Oh.
And would guardian be appropriate in there?
I'm happy to take a look at that language again with those points in mind. That really does come straight from the statute. I think that's the statutory language. But I also appreciate the fact that this board and our school district has really tried to define engagement with families more broadly than just parents. So let me take a look at that.
If the point, it seems like, you know, the point of it is you can't be too close. But if you're living in a step family, you know, not if your aunt is married to somebody who's the step uncle, not that. But, you know, in the household, it ought to include those other kinds of relationships.
So those are all the items that I had identified as being really important to make sure that I shared information and got board feedback. The next step, and I understand there's additional discussion to be had, will be to go back and create a new red line based on the input from today. And then that new red line will go through the board's ordinary policy process of study, public comment, and then will be brought back for adoption.
Do we have a tentative plan for when it will come back for study?
I believe that I had spoken with our DAC Policy Subcommittee Chair and talked about bringing it back in March after the DAC has had an opportunity to look at this issue again with the benefit of board feedback.
Richard?
Just very quickly, Kathleen, on page two, where it talks about, well, the last red line on the second paragraph, I think, "In approving DAC membership, the board shall strive to appoint members who reflect the student population significantly represented within the school district." Why did you put "shall strive to appoint"? Why not just "appoint"?
The statutory language on diversity of representation is, I think, really important. It's very directive, encourage, inform, recruit, really try to get that representation. In the event that you do not have willing participants or representatives, if we put "shall appoint diverse representation," then the board could be violating its own policy if we don't have parents who are willing to serve in those roles. So that's the reason that it has that softer language. This is our expectation, we're looking for diverse representation, but it wouldn't be a policy violation if the board appointed a DAC that was not able to meet all of those criteria.
So then, in this particular "strive to appoint," if you had a DAC employee or a school employee in DAC, and you couldn't find a parent, that school employee could also, if that school employee was a parent, could also take the role of the parent? I guess what I'm thinking is, if we're going to really seriously think about having a diverse DAC, then we should have a diverse DAC and not strive to have one, but to have one. And if we don't have one, then go back and get one. That's the only point that I'm trying to make. If we don't have one, just get one.
Nicole?
So I have a question or a suggestion. Under powers and duties for both the SAC and the DAC, it says that they shall establish a schedule of meetings to occur monthly between September and May. Since then, our timeline for our UIP adoption and our timeline for our charter renewal, our charter application policy has changed. I would recommend striking that from both of those and leaving, having those occur maybe in their bylaws or their rules of operation. And the line above that does say the DAC or the SAC in that section shall adopt bylaws and general rules for its operations. I'd recommend to allow flexibility and to accommodate our change in practice around those two big areas of conversation for those groups, that we remove that language from this policy.
Lisa?
I really like what Richard has to say. I do understand, obviously, the legal reason for the word strive. I mean, to Richard's point, we don't say that principals should strive to appoint SAC membership, we say they should just do it. And we recognize that there may be challenges at different schools to making that possible, but it needs to get done. And yes, if we're going to take it seriously, we shouldn't strive to do it, we should just do it with the diversity.
Can I just, Nicole, I think what you said makes a lot of sense because there's language, there's a potential statute that's changing the charter school application. So I think to the timeline, so to the extent that there's more flexibility there, I think that makes a lot of sense. Kitty?
I forgot what I was going to say. Oh, yes. So SACs and DAKs are mandated by law, but we know we have schools that don't have functioning SACs. What are the consequences of not having the SACs that we need?
I think in many ways, this statute leaves a lot of questions open, and that would be a question that would be open. I think that we've certainly heard today discussion from this board around the expectation for SACs. And I think that there's language that I could propose in the red line to really reflect what all of you have said about how essential it is that this operates and that it's meaningful, that they're listened to. So I think that we can strengthen that in the policy language without perhaps always saying, "What happens if you don't?" What happens if you don't is maybe we need to look more closely at the school.
Thank you.
So I appreciate, Lisa, your comments, Richard's comments as well. And this just may be a point of clarification for me. You know, "In approving DAC membership, the board shall strive to appoint members." And so if the members that are brought forward by the District Accountability Committee do not reflect, right, that diversity, then whose job is it to make that happen? Is it my job? Is it the DAC's board's job? Is it the Board of Education's job? Right, like, because ultimately, somebody is going to have to be accountable when you say "shall," then somebody's accountable to that. Now, to the extent that that would be in conflict with DAC bylaws potentially, I mean, because DAC has a set of bylaws that they run and operate. So I'm looking at Nicole because she had her hand raised, so she might be able to give me some clarity there.
No, I was going to say, that burden is real. And the statute, it is, it also includes making sure that a representative population of students that qualify for special education services or gifted and talented. And it's a lot of things that parents may not want to disclose as part of their membership on the SACs and DAC. So what statute says for that broad representation includes all of our special populations or free and reduced lunch populations. And parents, when they're applying for these or being appointed to these committees at their school, they may not want to say or provide that information. And so I don't know how, I would just be mindful of how are we going to get that information from our representatives? And how, to Dr. Anderson's point, like, who's responsible for making sure that we do have 20% or 10% or whatever percent for all of those representative populations?
If the spirit of the statute is to really create some checks and balances, right, it would feel out of balance if I was then directing the DAC on what they had to do. I just, it's a, I agree with the sentiment. I'm just trying to, you know, anytime we make commitments, these are commitments I'd want to be able to keep as superintendent as your one employee. And I'm just trying to think through what that might look like. Maybe it's conversations with DAC exec, maybe, I mean, this conversation's on the record, so we hear, you know, the desire, just the logistics on the accountability piece.
And I hear you, Nicole. I could see parents not wanting to say, "I'm your FRL representative," right, necessarily? Lisa?
I mean, I'm fine to keep talking about this, but I think just to answer the question, you're saying who would be responsible for this? The same person we hold responsible for appointing SAC membership. It's saying it's not just your duty to appoint, but it's your duty to appoint folks and to do a thorough dive into your population and to work hard to recruit people that match your school's population and diversity. It's not good enough to just walk out the door and pick the three parents you talk to most frequently. It's your job to do this and it's your job to do it right. And I suppose we're talking about the principal here, but they already do have an onus upon them, it's just expanding that.
Yeah, but the composition of the DAC, I mean, everybody would put together one representative. And so to the extent that each individual school puts up one representative, it's the dynamics of every individual appointment. So I hear what you're saying. So I, we could think about it, we could talk about it. I think it's important. I think it's an important topic. I don't know that we need to talk about this anymore this evening, but I just wanted to get that point on record to, that I'm very sensitive to the spirit of the law, right, which is to provide... which is to provide some checks and balances and engagement and inclusion. And I wouldn't feel as comfortable if I was directing a committee who in many ways feels like their job is to make sure that they're holding the district accountable, and me accountable, in many ways.
Kitty?
So remind me the answer to this. Have we ever appointed DAC members in the middle of a school year? Like, if somebody knew, let's say, a school that doesn't have a SAC finally gets it together and sends one, or sends a representative? And if so, if the slate of members, proposed members that's presented to the board does not represent the diversity of the population, would it be possible to say, "We need more members who are in whichever category we're missing"?
So to my knowledge, we have not come back to the board to fill out the ranks of DAC mid-year. The current policy language says if a vacancy arises, then the remaining members of the DAC fill that vacancy. And we had some new language to make sure that it would be the school SAC if it was their member who created the vacancy, that it would be the SAC who identified the person who fills that seat. I do wonder about that, having DAC fill out its own ranks in light of the conversation we've had today, whether it would be something that if there are to be mid-year appointments, that those are brought back to the board.
Yeah, I guess I-
It certainly could be.
Yeah, because I thought I read that if they did make, fill a vacancy, that the board had to approve it. But maybe I did not read that.
So the current language talks about removal requiring board approval. It does not require board approval for filling of vacancies currently.
I also just wanted to share that part of the DAC's efforts lately with their at-large members have been, when they look at the representation of their DAC, and they recognize that there are protected classes of folks that are not being represented, they actively try to seek those individuals out to make that board more representative. And so that is, I think that was part of the at-large membership also, is if we can't ensure from our SAC nominations who ends up on the DAC, that was the DAC's avenue for trying to round out and really be reflective.
I have one more question for you. So when I read your red line, the DAC doesn't have to do anything, and they actually do have to do something. You have, the DAC may make recommendations in writing. I think the statute's stronger than that. So I think we should outline what they actually have to do. And the DAC and the SAC, as I read the statute, there's this language, Kathleen, that I would love to see included. And it says, "to meet at least quarterly to discuss whether school district leadership, personnel, and infrastructure are advancing or impeding implementation of the school district's performance improvement, blah, 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 or other progress pertinent to the school district's accreditation contract." That language seems really important to me, and I haven't seen it in the DAC stuff or the SAC stuff or yours. So if you could throw that in, and we could see what it looks like. But I think this language around powers and duties of the DAC needs to be stronger, is what they actually have to do under the statute. So I like, and what troubled me with some of the language from the DAC presentation is, I like the way you've tried to summarize it, because the statute's very deliberate in the verbs that it chooses. And so I think we just need to be really careful in the verbs that we choose. And so I thought you did a good job capturing that. I just thought this last paragraph, "may make recommendations," was a little too soft, given what they actually have statutory requirements to do. Is that all right with Nicole?
I was gonna, I noticed the same thing, I wasn't sure if this was for iteration number two, but we outlined some of the statutory requirements in the duties and roles and not all of them. And then we kind of co-mingle some of the things that we may jointly agree to do with the board in this policy. And I wonder if there's opportunity to tease out what may the actual statutory requirements are versus what we may ask them to do, like give feedback on policy or other, and be clear about what does state law require of them, and then what may we want them, if, does that make sense? But I agree, if we're going to include some of the statutory obligations, we should include them all, just to be consistent with state language, law language.
I agree with including the statutory language, and I would hesitate to include those others that we might ask, because another board may not feel the same way. So I would only like to see the statutory requirements, actually, not the other stuff that we might ask of them.
Thank you so much for the discussion and the opportunity to have a whole work session dedicated to policy. It just warms this school board lawyer's heart.
I think you're not alone. I think this board loves policy, given the fact we just spent almost two hours on this. So anybody else for the good of the order? Can I get a thumbs up from our DAC representative in the back? Are we okay? I just want to make sure. Thank you for coming. Anybody else? So maybe we can get Rob to his band concert and Lisa home before the snow gets really ugly out there?
I don't think it's starting until nighttime.
All right, all right. So is there a motion to adjourn by Kitty? All right, this meeting's adjourned.